It's a great honor for me to open this morning session together with two generals. They have a lot of similarities in their careers. Both of them are engineers by education, they've been military engineers in service. Both of them for many decades have served in their country's armed forces. They have had a lot to do with the nuclear issues. I don't think anybody will be surprised if I say that Colonel General Maslin was head of 12th Main Directorate in the Ministry of Defence of Russian Federation, that is the directorate that is responsible for the entire lifecycle of nuclear stockpiles, transportation, decommissioning and disposal. General Al Sahaoui for many decades has served in the Ministry of Defence of Pakistan and he is in the nuclear domain as well. Currently, General Ali is Deputy Director of the Strategic Plans Division in Joint Services Headquarters, that is a division that is very similar to the 12th Main Directorate of Russian Defence Ministry. I asked General Maslin to maintain discussion in the same language. Two generals can understand each other much better than a political scientist like myself. They have been responsible for extremely important, extremely sensitive things in their countries. The idea was to have an informal discussion. It would be more of a conversation. So if anyone during that conversation feels like an extra cup of tea or coffee, we have plenty of that just outside of this room. We are going to first take a 10-minute presentation from the general and then we're all going to sit down and have a conversation. Then for 20 minutes, together with General Maslin, we are going to ask questions and talk to General Ali and then another 15 minutes will be available for questions. At 8:45, we are going to bring this session to an end so that we can start the next session on time and we are going to have to do a few things about the room. So once again, thank you for coming at 8 o'clock in the morning, special thanks to the Russian colleagues because we don't have a culture of early morning sessions in this part of the world. Now over to you, General Ali.
Dr. Anton, excellencies, distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Since I'm taking the floor for the first time, I would like to begin by thanking Anton and his team for hosting and organising it so well, this conference on nuclear energy disarmament and non-proliferation, as indeed for the government of Russian Federation to encourage such an important event, to encourage with an all-inclusive approach towards subjects of intense global importance in the historic capital of Russian Federation. It is an absolute pleasure to hear about the lasting work done by living legend Ambassador Roland Timmerberg, his contributions as indeed of those who took the torch after him in Russian Federation and similar experts in other nuclear weapons states have contributed immensely to the international peace and security. It is indeed heartening to learn that he still devotes time to non-proliferation learning across the globe. I also take this opportunity to commend all the speakers of the conference for providing valuable input on these important issues. Given the diversity of views of various experts in this conference has been fascinating experience as some of these views also provide an alternative voice on these issues. Pakistan's relations with international partners are of immense importance. The upward trajectory of Pakistan-Russia bilateral relations in particular is vital for peace and security in our region and beyond. In the backdrop of our shared interests and emerging regional security order, there is sufficient space for bilateral cooperation in various fields, including regional and international security, defence and energy. In particular, being an energy-deficient country, Pakistan is open to all avenues to meet its growing energy needs and for sustainable economic growth. We appreciate Russia's leading and objective role in several issues of global importance and look forward to working together bilaterally as well as multilaterally in the interest of regional security and balance. We also hope that the international community in general and Russian Federation in particular would deal with Pakistan's application for the Nuclear Suppliers Group membership with due consideration. As a responsible nuclear weapon state, Pakistan has remained demonstrably committed to the goals of non-proliferation while sharing the global concerns that proliferation of weapons of mass destruction poses a serious threat to international peace and security. Such goals nevertheless would remain elusive if not supported by objective and sustainable efforts to address legitimate security concerns of all, so as to ensure equal and undiminished security for all the states. As a country that faces significant threats to its security, nuclear as well as mounting conventional disparity within its region, Pakistan also remains concerned of the challenges to the regional stability. With a firm belief in a non-discriminatory access to peaceful uses of nuclear technology to all states with due regards to safeguards, Pakistan has always fulfilled its international obligations in the realm of nuclear technologies consistent with the IIA and NSG guidelines. Despite that we are not a party to the NPT, Pakistan has fully respected and supported the objectives of non-proliferation. It would be prudent to recall that after the Indian nuclear test of 1974, we had made several proposals to keep South Asia free of nuclear weapons and their delivery systems. Though now overtaken by time in a contemporary sense and moreover since there was no traction on such Pakistani proposals, we were forced to seek and pursue credible nuclear deterrence particularly in the backdrop of May 1998 nuclear tests. The purpose of our nuclear capability is to deter and prevent war. The history suggests, as also in the Cold War, nuclear weapons have helped maintain peace. The international security landscape depicts some disturbing developments while a few existing conflicts seem to aggravate, new ones are evolving. Differences on perspectives, approaches and modalities are negatively impacting progress on nuclear arms control. Exceptionalism is undermining the credibility of non-proliferation regime. As a result, the global nuclear order has come under increasing stress which is further shaken up by the recent developments in the Korean Peninsula and future of JCPOA. The sensible course of action is to recognise that role of nuclear weapons is essentially to ensure peace and stability, not to fight wars. Such stability when achieved must lead to further augmentation of international efforts to resolve underlying disputes, the so-called root causes that threaten to escalate into conflicts and might carry the potential to cross the nuclear threshold. Needless to overemphasise that this places a greater responsibility on nuclear weapons states. They all must ensure that at global as well as regional levels, the pursuit and preservation of their national interests must remain consistent with a universally accepted principle of resorting to peaceful resolution of disputes. While deterrence has arguably maintained stability, such space must be expanded further. Attempts to resort to use of force, especially when the states with nuclear weapons are involved, can lead to dangerous consequences. While ensuring security would remain each state's prerogative and responsibility, the possibility of escalation to the nuclear armageddon must be avoided. Ladies and gentlemen, one emerging trend in the contemporary world is that of realignments and new regional groupings. This would augment efforts to tackle the challenges of instability in various regions of the world. In this regard, role of China and Russia is of critical importance. The destructive power of nuclear weapons merits responsible stewardship with effective measures for nuclear weapons' safety, security and safeguards. Pakistan is fully alive to this responsibility. We have put in place stringent control and oversight under a robust command and control system. Our Centre of Excellence for Nuclear Security is widely acknowledged and merits emulating by interested states. To conclude, ladies and gentlemen, management of the enormous power of atom obligates equally massive responsibility. While atomic weapons give us the opportunity to preserve peace and to prevent war, nuclear technology also serves the humanity through its peaceful applications in clean energy generation, medical care and agricultural uses. The collective future in the 21st century will depend on exercising responsibility, restraint and transparency in handling this awesome capability. I thank you all.
Thank you, General Ali. Thank you for your views on the role of nuclear weapons. That is essentially the subject of our session, the role of nuclear weapons in the 21st century. Let me ask the first question. Recently, a nuclear ban treaty has been opened for signing. What is your vision of the Pakistan attitude towards this treaty?
And many of the eminent participants and speakers spoke on this subject. We have not supported this treaty because it does not take care into all the secure considerations which are enshrined in the UN Security Council resolutions. Therefore, we have decided that we did not support this treaty. And based on our assessment that it will be very difficult to achieve consensus on this treaty, so I don't think so that we would be supporting this treaty. But anyway, there were several measures and steps which were suggested yesterday, step-by-step approach that we can look into it. But let's see how does it progress at the UN.
You mentioned the group of nuclear suppliers. I know how often the military in Pakistan, including the Strategic Planning Department, refer to this issue. Many people ask a question, including myself, why the military and not the scientific community, why the military bring this up? This is about providing nuclear technologies for civilian use. Why the military in Pakistan so often refer to this subject? How does this issue of Nuclear Suppliers Group impact the belts of interest in the region? How does it impact Pakistan's national interests? Something that is in the direct responsibility of your organisation.
To the the organisation which has been created in Pakistan, the National Command Authority and Strategic Plans Division is the secretariat of the National Command Authority. The National Command Authority, I may mention that it is headed by the Prime Minister, it has four key ministers and the three services. SPD is just the secretariat of this National Command Authority. So by virtue of that, the civil nuclear power programme, civil uses of the nuclear capability as well as the military capability both fall under the domain of the Strategic Plans Division. Although on ground, the civil nuclear power and all other the peaceful uses of nuclear energy is handled by the scientists, Pakistan Atomic Energy Commission by law is assigned this responsibility. But by virtue of being a secretary to the National Command Authority, this falls on whosoever is heading the Strategic Plans Division and by that law, a military general is supposed to head that. So therefore, you keep hearing about the Nuclear Suppliers Group request. But this request is not only made by the Strategic Plans Division, it is made by our ambassadors, by our Foreign Minister, by our Prime Minister. Every important person who is in the handling of the things at the Foreign Affairs level, whenever somebody visits to any other country, whether it is Vienna or Ayya Yaya. So this request is made at important capitals through the diplomatic channels. Regarding its importance for Pakistan, the first thing is that Nuclear Suppliers Group is basically, when exceptional waiver in 2008 was given to India, after the 2008 waiver which was given to India, they started the nuclear trade. Now what happens that the trade, nuclear trade became kosher for India and it remains unacceptable for the international community for Pakistan? What has happened is that because of the waiver which India got, they started diverting all its domestic uranium for the weapons programme and whereas whatever they were importing was putting to the civilian use. Now this created a huge imbalance between the stocks of fissile material between India and Pakistan. Although we were late starters as to say, India started this work in 1974 and we only started earnestly in 1998 after our over nuclear test. So that was one disadvantage, the other disadvantage which came about was in 2008 as I mentioned and now till to date, India is using that domestic capability entirely for the weapons development and whatever they are importing. Eleven countries, they have contracted with eleven countries and close to nine to 10,000 tonnes of uranium they have imported. So this is the difference in the stocks which has come about. This is second, third is that we are not part of that, everything is denied to Pakistan. Simple items which are required for our industrial development, the dual-use item, they are denied to Pakistan. So therefore, we are requesting the international community that they should reduce, remove this imbalance and they should also allow imports of dual-use items to Pakistan. Pakistan is an energy-deficient country and we need to invest into the nuclear energy because it's a clean energy. Therefore, we request that if we become a member of the Nuclear Suppliers Group, we will be able to meet our energy, growing energy requirements as the plan of the government. Till 2050, year 2050, we intend to take this plus of 1,000 megawatt of nuclear energy which we have. We have five nuclear power plants currently in operation and two are under construction. So we want to take this from this around 1,200 megawatt to something like 40,000 megawatt of electric nuclear energy that is the share in the overall plan. And so there is a huge scope for investment also. And so these are major reasons because Pakistan needs Nuclear Suppliers Groups.
I think that this logic that India has received a waiver and it can use its domestic resources, uranium resources for military programme and that is why Pakistan also should because there is an imbalance in the region, therefore Pakistan should also get a waiver. This pushes experts and other people in the community to the conclusion that joining Nuclear Suppliers Group could help develop the military dimension. I think that is what stands in the way of positive response to Pakistani application. Evgeny, over to you.
Thank you, Anton. Mr. Flopkoff, colleagues, I won't say any anything new if I start by saying thank you to Anton Flopkoff and to the Centre for Energy and Security Studies for organising this excellent conference. Until now, it has been an excellent event. I have always dreamed of having an event where in one panel we would have representatives of DPRK, United States, America, China and Russian Federation sitting together. We could only dream about that and it has happened in this conference and this is hugely impressive. I've been dealing with nuclear issues for a long time and I was so interested in those debates we had yesterday that I really could not be distracted. This special session is also very interesting. I've been to many conferences, I've been in many different places. Normally, in the military community, in the diplomatic community and scientific community, people would ask questions about nuclear weapons in Pakistan. This subject has been really closed for a long time, nobody knew anything. I've been dealing with nuclear weapons since 1959 and I had a very clear understanding of nuclear weapons in the United States and P5. I knew nothing about Pakistani nuclear weapons. And it's very nice that General Ali has said very clearly that it is secure, that there is a system of control of nuclear weapons. The region that Pakistan belongs to has a long history. Today, the situation is rather stressed. Possession of nuclear weapons, as General said, is a great responsibility. I would like to raise a few questions. And I apologise, I have always been jealous of political scientists and diplomats. They can speak very eloquently, they know how to shape their questions and then you try to figure out what they're talking about. You can't really make anything of what they say. So if I ask straightforward questions, please excuse me for that. So here comes the first one. I understand that Pakistan has created nuclear weapons copy the nuclear deterrence model that has already been developed. And this was a response to creation of nuclear weapons in India. I don't know something. All the information I have about nuclear weapons in Pakistan have been borrowed from internet and I wanted to ask, has Pakistan taken any commitment for no first use of nuclear weapons? That is the first question. Question two. What is, what kind of system do you have for decision-making on use of nuclear weapons? In this context, there is a security question about the possibility of unsanctioned use, unauthorized use of nuclear weapons. And the next one. At the time of the opposing political systems in the United States and in the Soviet Union, we still maintained contacts in the line of nuclear weapons, there's been a number of treaties, START and other treaties. Do you have any contacts between the nuclear authorities in Pakistan and in India for the purpose of nuclear security? And my final question is this. In your presentation, you said that Pakistan is an advocate of non-proliferation. More specifically, could you comment on the issue of the Korean Peninsula problem? Development of nuclear weapons in Pakistan somewhat resembles a situation on the Korean Peninsula. That is, to prevent all kinds of unpleasant consequences, DPRK decided to develop a nuclear potential and they're moving in that direction. What is your attitude? Do you think that would give impetus to many other programmes? Maybe other countries would follow the example of India, Pakistan and DPRK. Hey, if having nuclear weapons is so good, maybe we should have another 20 or 30 countries with nuclear weapons and that would make the world even more secure. Thank you, that's all from me.
Thank you, General. Before I take on his question, just a clarification, what Anton remarked he passed. Basically, what the requirement for the NSG is that it is this is Pakistan's and Indian nuclear programmes, both are not the legitimate so-called nuclear programme, we are outside the NPT, the P5, we are not recognised. So when India got the waiver, so it is an effort. Now what they are getting materially, India is not obstructed by anything because they are getting fissile material. Why they are also pursuing the membership of the NSG is the status and recognition of their nuclear programme. So this is one very important thing which I thought I must clarify. Regarding General's question, the no first use. As you understand that between India and Pakistan, we are already deployed the military forces, there is so-called an escalation along the line of control, there are troops are deployed. So there is an active military deployment in parts of Kashmir, which is the main reason or the as we call it, the core dispute between India and Pakistan. So under those environment and Pakistan being a smaller military and a nuclear power, India is spending something like eight times more than what Pakistan is spending. Similarly, they have that advantage in terms of nuclear weapons numbers etcetera and conventional as well as nuclear capability, there is a great imbalance in the conventional capability and somewhat, not, we don't go into the numbers in the nuclear game, but somewhat otherwise because India is making its own nuclear capability with its own aims and objectives. So a smaller nuclear power will not, its credibility will come under question if they declare a no-first-use policy. India has declared a no-first-use policy, but it is a political rhetoric, I will explain it, that when a no-first-use is conditioned by that in so-and-so condition, in so-and-so condition, India will jettison its pledge for no-first-use. For example, it is in their doctrine, they say that even the threat of use of nuclear weapon will invoke measures which are consequences of destruction. So similarly, they also use the terminology that even the threat of chemical and biological weapons would also invoke such kind of a response. So a subjective no-first-use, we don't believe that, that it is a sincere offer and being a smaller military power, our nuclear doctrine will come under question, nuclear capability will come under question if we pledge because that means that India will have an upper edge to apply the military capability, the huge military capability that Pakistan has given a pledge of no-first-use. So therefore, it is not in our interest to accept India's offer of no-first-use. India itself, I must remind you, has itself not formally accepted the offer of no-first-use offered by China. So there is a double standard being adhered to by India, that on one side they offer us a no-first-use, on the other side for the China, they haven't accepted that. The General asked the next question, decision-making for the use of weapons. Nuclear weapons are exclusively, the use of nuclear weapons is prerogative of the, is a political decision. It's the prerogative of the National Command Authority which comprises of nine important decision-makers. Four are from the military and five are from the civil. The exclusive right of allowing or use of nuclear weapons rests with the Prime Minister of Pakistan. So that means it will be always a political decision, not only the military decision. So that means it will be always a political decision, not only the military decision. Military, we can only provide them the input, that is how the nuclear weapons will be used and that is how the, according to a chain of command, these orders for use of nuclear weapons will go and that is how they will be in case of an emergency if ever there is a requirement. The General asked the unsanctioned use. The system has been developed on a, studying the model of the Cold War, the American, the Soviet Union and Russian model and other models we have studied and based on those international best practices, they are the models, the use of nuclear weapons have been developed according to certain protocols. Where no single person is ever authorized to use the nuclear weapons, there is a proper chain of command, people are dedicated and using two-man or three-man rule and the orders are passed from top to the launch commanders. And according to that protocol, we have built into them the safeguards of always and never requirements into the system so that they are ready and available whenever they are required to be used, but they are never used as unauthorized or as a result of a miscalculation, accident, or some unintended use. The fourth question, the General asked maintaining contacts like SALT or something. When Pakistan and India became nuclear powers immediately after 1998, we offered a very comprehensive strategic restraint regime to India in which we included non-deployment and non-development of this capability. But unfortunately, whatever suggestions or offers we made to India, India was not accepting those. Nonetheless, there are three or four major issues which still to date have been, we involved, engaged with India in a comprehensive dialogue. This is part of a comprehensive CBM package, the Confidence Building Mayor Package, in which few things I will, there are a number of things which were there on the table which have been finalized. One is that we have a hotline with India and in case of an accident or in case of escalation, they can, you talk to each other. This is also available at the military level, this is also available at the foreign secretary levels. So this is one. Second is we have an agreement with India on non-attack on each other's nuclear facilities. This agreement is holding till to date. And another agreement which we made with India was that giving an advance notification of the, before the missile testing, there are predefined dates and we inform India and similarly, India informs Pakistan. This has been working very fine. Beyond that, there were many CBMs which we had offered India, but what our observation is that Indian aims and objectives are larger and global. So therefore, India is not interested in having any sort of realistic CBMs more than this. So therefore, the CBMs are no more a matter of priority for India while we keep offering that. Whenever there is, will be improvement in the environment between India and Pakistan and we again go back to talks on the table, then again, we can start working on those. The General may also asked about DPRK's and Pakistan's development of nuclear weapons. DPRK has its own security threats and according to those security threats, they are developing their weapons and their capabilities being developed. As far as Pakistan is concerned, Pakistan faces a direct threat from India. Pakistan was dismembered in the public, in the international community's gaze and a glare in 1971 and whatever we call the erstwhile united Pakistan was dismembered. And we did not even contemplate started developing nuclear capability, but when India did 1974 test, then it was decided by the leadership at that time that never again they, we should allow an opportunity that any country like India will divide Pakistan. So that is the time when earnestly Pakistan started developing its nuclear capability. Now, having continued developing this capability in some form, we were never the first one to test this capability. In 1974, India did and in May 1998, India conducted number of nuclear tests and that forced Pakistan to develop, to declare its capability overt by conducting the missile, the nuclear tests. And subsequently, we offered India not to develop this capability, not to weaponize, not to develop missiles in South Asia, but obviously, they had their own agenda, their own aims and objectives. So therefore, India did not pay any attention or heed to what our proposals were and they continue, they continued developing. Our capability is extensively India-specific and we are developing this capability because of a threat we faced from our eastern neighbor and that is what is our threat perception. That is the reason for developing this capability.
Thank you, General Ali. We've got five questions to take, questions from the floor. Please, General, be brief with your question. I'd like to thank General Ali for very candid answers. I did like, I did like your answers. One last question, if I may. General, do you think, how many munitions, how many warheads do you think you need for the deterrence system to be effective? Look, based on the data I have, I think Pakistan currently is number five in terms of the number of munitions and you keep increasing the number of munitions. You have outpaced the UK. I mean, how many more do you need to say, okay, stop, period, that's enough?
That is an interesting question. The data, whatever comes out, we are shown as the fastest growing.
I take my data from the web, I'm sorry.
The data which comes out on the internet and they portray this Pakistan or the media portrays the articles, various think tanks, they portray that Pakistan has the fastest growing nuclear weapons program. Whereas in reality, it is different, it is India which is developing its capability and outpacing Pakistan somehow. Unfortunately, these facts are not projected correctly in many of the publications which we see because we are seeing the development across the border also and we know exactly what we are doing. Regarding your question, what we have, our basic doctrine is based on developing a capability of credible minimum deterrence. So essentially, it remains within the confines of minimum. Minimum we adhere to and you can see the capability which is being developed. Everything, the money makes the mayor go. Keep, in keeping in view the economy, whatever Pakistan's economy can offer to develop military capability as well as nuclear capability, it has to be in line with that. So obviously, you can make your own assessment that what sort of financial resources would be diverted to this program. And when we talk about this capability in terms of minimum, on the other side, what India has done is very conveniently and quietly, they have omitted the word minimum from, they have jettisoned this word minimum from this. Now they say, they proclaim is capability development of credible deterrence. So that means the dichotomy lies somewhere else, that they are developing a credible deterrence capability while we are strictly adhering to the minimum. So therefore, we can, you can be sure that Pakistan is not in an open-ended arms race with India in the nuclear weapons, neither in conventional weapons nor in the nuclear weapons, we can't afford it. Our economy can't afford it, neither our doctrine dictates that we have an open-ended. There are well-defined numbers and this capability is being developed in a manner that we retain balance and we deter aggression. That is essentially, the capability will be, will be based on credible minimum deterrence.
Ali, у нас есть возможность для трех коротких вопросов и таких же коротких ответов. Okay, we have time for three brief questions and three brief responses. Ambassador Kitano, Pavel and Karol Robisch.
Share with your perspective and it is a very valuable occasion for us to know your perspective. And I would like to focus on one of the point you mentioned in your opening remarks and the role of nuclear weapon and in the Cold War and it showed that it is meaningful to prevent wars. And the question which I would like to mention is that issue of stability-instability paradox. And I don't have to mention that in the balance in the strategic level, sometimes it can create a problem in the lower level, I mean, on the conventional level and low intensity and the conflict. This idea was then developed through a Cold War and but it is, and at the same time pointed out and nowadays, it also functions. And sometimes it is mentioned and in your, in your South and Western and Asia subcontinent and it also functions and after 1998. So what do you think about this issue of stability-instability paradox? Thank you very much.
We remain concerned about this stability-instability paradox. Basically, the issue starts with the unsettled dispute of Kashmir in Pakistan, between Pakistan and India. This is a legacy which we inherited with the partition. So since then, we have fought three wars with India, 1948, 49, then is 1965 and 1971. Now, these troops are still deployed in, along the line of control we call, that is the undemarketed boundary between the Indian-held Kashmir and Pakistani Kashmir. So this is the basic reason for this stability-instability paradox and the military, when they are deployed and there are provocations. Now you can see during this last even one and a half year, there is an indigenous uprising in Kashmir because of this, there is an insurgency, they call what Indian has called or we call that as a freedom struggle by the Kashmiris, what they are making. Now, in order to divert attention of the world from there, the Indians, what they do is they activate the, or the line of control is activated and there are violations of the ceasefire agreement between India and Pakistan which has been worked out. So this is the environment in which India and Pakistan are there. So when your soldiers are sitting eyeball to eyeball, it is very difficult to control the escalation and particularly during the last couple of years, what India has done, that we believe that nuclear neighbors don't go to war, nuclear neighbors don't fight. Now, in order to, they have, they had linked, in case of an escalation of 2001, linked with terrorist incident with the deployment of military instrument against Pakistan. So 2001 saw a massive escalation and Indians, almost one billion army, strong army, came to the borders. There was a standoff, military standoff for 10 months, although Indians did not cross the international border, but there is risk into it. Now, what India did, instead of learning lessons from this, that in the, in case of a nuclear war, there will be horrendous consequences, so military escalation should be avoided. India developed a new doctrine which they called, you must have heard about it, Cold Star Doctrine or a proactive operation strategy. For a long time, they developed this capability, last 10, 15 years, but they kept denying it officially until just recently, they accepted their, Army Chief and Air Chief accepted that, yes, this is there. Now, they developed this Cold Star Doctrine basically to fight a war below Pakistan's nuclear threshold and keep the nuclear factor out of the calculus and only fight the war at the conventional level. Now, this does not happen because nuclear and conventional capabilities, they have to come into play in case of an escalation. So therefore, what you are suggesting, viewing is the stability-instability paradox will remain in between India and Pakistan until and unless the root cause is addressed and that is the addressing the Kashmir issue.
We have time just for two very short 30 seconds, each question. General, you will have one minute to answer both of them.
Look, I have a very brief question, General Ali, thank you very much. I wonder if Pakistan develops a system to protect civilians and civilian facilities and installations in case of a possible nuclear strike? Something similar to the civil defense system that the Soviet Union and Russia has.
Karol Robisch, Carnegie Corporation of New York. You mentioned some of the specific steps that have been taken to reduce nuclear risks between India and Pakistan. And my question for you is, are there, in your personal opinion, are there other steps that could be taken either with regard to India and Pakistan or with the regard to the threat posed by non-state actors in the region? Are there other specific steps that you would recommend that you think could be taken if there were greater cooperation possible? Are there specific things that you would like to see to reduce the risk of nuclear risks?
The first question regarding the protection of civilians, building some infrastructure. Yes, we have plans. Obviously, it requires a lot of money. Some work is being done in this regard, we don't consider it enough, a lot can be done and I think the Russian model, what you referred, that is the, one of the best things which one could see that. But obviously, it will take time for Pakistan to develop such a capability to protect your civilians completely as well as your infrastructure. Although there are ways and means to protect it, like deploying other systems, but comprehensively, it will take some time in Pakistan. Your second question was regarding the steps which we take with India. Yes, there are possible steps which we can discuss with India, but as I mentioned, Indian aims and objectives are not to discuss these issues with Pakistan and they are not interested, India is not interested in discussing these issues. Yes, together, we can sit on the CBM tables and we can discuss and work out many ways and means how to address this issue.
Karol, I suggest to stop now, we can continue, we will have 10 minutes break, but we must start the next sessions on time. So thank you to all of you for joining us this morning. Please thank our generals.
General, sir, thank you.
We will continue at 9 o'clock. Be back in 10 minutes. Thank you and have you, see you again soon.